Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Monday, April 17th, 2017. Everybody is here this evening. Thank you folks for doing this today. I'm going to add a short mayor thing after minutes so we can take care of a budget appointment. But first, let's go to the minutes. And are they okay with everybody? Is that a motion?
Sorry.
A motion?
Second.
A motion, a second improvement, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Counselors, at your place, you see a budget application for Saul Diaz to serve on our Budget Committee. Didn't have the, I hadn't had a chance to visit with him prior to the packet coming out. So sorry for handing you this at the end. I recommend Saul to be added to our Budget Committee with one of the positions that was available. Person got hired to work for the city, so can't serve the Budget Committee. So anyway, I think Saul will do a good job.
Who will be rotating off the Budget Committee?
From, is that the museum? Sharon?
Sharon?
Yeah.
Yeah, Sharon.
Okay. Yes, I move to approve Saul Diaz to the position of Budget Committee member.
Second. Motion, second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you very much. Just a reminder, our next meeting will be held at Central High School on the 25th at 8:30. And for council members who are new what this is, we've been doing this for 12, 13 years. This is the only exposure to real-life government that they get. Council, we have a real council meeting and we do have a few more information items that, so folks can see some of the things that are covered in the City Council meeting. Then we have what has been done, we call it, but it's invited testimony. And Karen, do you recall, the question was how best to communicate with young people? I think that was not the question?
Yes, it was something like, how can the city of Independence communicate with you and you and the city?
And so, the purpose of that is for young people, there'll be about 200 students there. The whole senior class will be there. And so, we do that and have, the benefits have been really interesting over time. The movie theater was one of the things that came up as a need in the community. So were some sidewalks and some health clinics. And so, it's been a real good thing. It's the only time to actually do, see local government in action. So I just want you folks to know that. Moving forward, Mr. City Manager, I think you have, your report is listed and you probably have some other things to add, so we're going to leave that now.
I did not actually prepare a list of ongoing activities because I know you have a long evening in front of you. Just one announcement, many of you are seeing the North Coast Natural Gas trucks going through the community, been used, probably after gas shut off. Or some of you may, or none of you may, but regardless, there's a lot of folks in the community that are, they had a, as they were doing the work out here on the frigging landing, they made some sort of tactical error. And when they thought they isolated the lines and changed it out, they hadn't, apparently they got the air in the lines, which can be rather of concern. So they're going throughout the community and shutting down lines throughout. So, just so you know, in case you're back for folks. Just, the only thing I'm going to report on really tonight is the items that you have in your packet. You have two items. One, and they relate to each other, has to do with the processing of our land use, oh, actually, they don't really have that much to do with each other. One has to do with the actual processing of the specific marijuana application, that's a report from AKS. And the other is a general report, a general, is a letter that the mayor's presented that relates to the development of the land use regulations that you are in the midst of considering as we speak. So, I think the one, given that you're still working on, well, I'll start with the communication conference zones. That letter was in response to a question that the mayor received, but others have been sharing with me and other staff, is what happened with the maps. I think the mayor's letter raised that, you know, of course, I say what exactly happened, so I really don't have anything to add to that, other than that that's how that moved forward. Ultimately, what you have received from us is a staff recommendation. You and the planning commission both will see the options and will be able to consider those options fully and then disavert the staff recommendation as you see fit. So, that's how that evolved. Letter is more precise in terms of how that might be doing, and I think that may be able to manage it. With respect to the next item, which is-
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I have a question then. I'm not sure what the letter looks like, but I remember being before I was a council, I remember being here, I want to say it was a December meeting, and the council was discussing, and this was Nancy Lodge in Maryland, or in Maryland, but there were others, discussing a 100-foot barrier between marijuana sites and residential. And it was agreed that something was going to happen, I'm guessing something was, there was going to be another map made or whatever. But I never saw anything happen of that and came back to the council. I didn't come to every council meeting before I became a council, so did I miss it? I don't, I haven't-
My take on it, Mayor, I don't know if you want to jump in, girl, I'll just move forward. So, what my memory of that time was, and I had co-sense with the attorney's memory as well, is we went, you had in front of you a discussion at your request of council, to lead the council, I recognize you were seated as council president, but the council had to request a number of options for various types of map, various maps that showed buffers of various kinds, and a couple of those maps showed buffers based on residential zones. Others had, the other map was, did not have a buffer with respect to the residential zone, but had buffers with respect to the parks, churches, public facilities. And then I think there was a current scenario map as well. So, the council was advised in varying, various strong terms that in consideration of the residential zone with a buffer, when, and this is by the city attorney at the time, whether 100 foot, 50 foot, or 500 feet, it really made little difference, the risk to the city would be there, a strong risk to the city of litigation involving under the new statutes. When the council was, when the discussion took place at council, at the end of the day, you know, as best I could tell, the attorney agrees with me, there wasn't an outright vote, but as best we could tell, it was roughly a three or four to three split on where that was, and so that wasn't really, regardless of how that split went down, turns out I think that still was in favor of no residential buffer, but regardless of how that split would come down, it was still in staff to provide your recommendation. So unless we saw a strong indication from the council of that, you know, you want to go this way, you know, for sure, or that way for sure, you know, our recommendation to you was going to be, you know, the best information and the man and risk level that was acceptable from a staff perspective. So that's what we provided to both planning commission and this council. You're always willing to ignore, you're always able to ignore that recommendation and go where you choose. We just want to make it clear that from a staff perspective, we don't think that risk is warranted in this instance, because that's not insured. That wouldn't be come out of the city conference if there was a risk in it. There's fairly deep pockets in this industry, and so that could be a very cost in the lawsuit, and it would have to come out entirely of the city conference to what end. I don't see that the risk award warrants that.
Okay, one thing, can I add to the-
Let me go.
Okay.
Ken, did you have a follow you wanted to?
Well, only that, I have been on the council, or I haven't even been in this town for very long, maybe three years, but I was pretty impressed when you started having 60 and 70 residents, voting residents, people that live here, objecting to something. And I was not the feeling that they're willing to go, you know, to say, go, council, go take a risk and do something that you know is right, and take the risk to follow. But I don't know what the, is it council, you guys remember voting on this thing? I don't remember seeing it.
We were not, that was a work session, first of all. Is that correct? That was a work session where we considered the maps? And there was a pretty clear statement that there would not be a vote because this had to go to Planning Commission. However, I don't like to have it characterized that we had an opinion but didn't take a vote because the bottom line was that we were not asked to even give our opinions in a finalizing way because it had to go to Planning Commission first.
I'm going to weigh in on this, is that I had some concerns about what the litigation issues were, and I know for myself, I wanted to go, because we had a conversation, and it was, it was a generic conversation. Understood. You know, as a concept, it was a discussion. But I know for myself, I wanted to see what additional information came up in the Planning Commission process, and because I knew they were going to have to bring that all to us anyway. And so, rather than presupposing what they were going to do, I think, you know, for myself, I expressed concerns, and I know some people took that as something different than it was, because I will raise questions on, or thoughts on both sides of an issue if you want to, or on three different sides, I have a triangle. And so, I'm waiting to hear what the Planning Commission does after they go through their full process, because then it's going to come back to, it'll come to us with whatever, and as was put in the communication, we can take staff's reported recommendations, we can not take staff's recommendations, we can modify, but, you know, we pay these people to come up with recommendations, you don't always have to agree, but, you know, at least that's, you know, that's what we do.
Are we going to see maps two and three again tonight?
Oh, it wasn't what we were planning to, because it's still going to go, everything's still going to the Planning Commission.
But I understood that at the last Planning Commission meeting, they continued the decision and didn't finalize it.
Yeah, then nothing's finalized yet.
Next time, next time, it's on your agenda, I believe, it's May 9th.
But so, so if somebody comes in and applies for a building permit on the lot next to the one they just got approved, they're going on the same, it's going to be the same way it was before, with the exception, they got setbacks or whatever, right?
Well, not even that exception, the rules will be the same as they are today.
Which is no rules.
Well, they're not their rules, there's the technical, there's the technical, same rules in any industry.
But none of the, none of the work that we did at the last meeting on the 9th to get-
And even if you were to adopt that on, let's say, May 9th as is presented, or as you choose, it still has to go through a referral process back to the state. You know, see, the end of land use, it goes through public notice, there's an extensive process on the land use, the Memphis of the Land Use Code, state law. So, that, yeah, that hasn't changed, that will change for a little bit.
Yeah, my concern is that the longer it goes that we don't change, that we don't, we don't do something, the longer it's going to be that people can come in, and I think that at least some of the residents of this city don't want grow sites within the city limits period. I'm not just talking about where they're going to market or retail or medical, I'm talking about grow sites in particular. So, I guess, far as I consider, we can have a discussion at the City Council, and we don't have to have Planning Commission say it, we can do it anyway.
Actually, I don't think that's the case. I think you refer it through the zoning code, it goes through processes, it'll happen in the code.
And I believe we already had that discussion, and that's why we're going through the process. We decided we really couldn't just act as the council, we needed to go through the process to get that done properly.
So, how do we prevent processing another application if it were to be put before the building permits?
Well, we can't, we asked that last time, we can't do that, we can't affect, we cannot implement a order to, if your city attorney has already weighed in on that. So, yeah, that's the, that's the period, we're in the period where an application could come in for anything, that's the end of the state, that's just our bottom, and that might be, you know, something to change by whatever code you might, there'll be setback changes for sure, there'll be parking changes with respect to, you know, where the building is located, there's other changes in that code that we talked. I'm not sure if noise or road report or this code or within the, I think they're in the nuisance code. But you've already made a number of changes. The other changes so far we haven't, you know, we are where we are today. I'm sorry, but that is state law, that's state where we are.
So, now, I'm confused now. You said we've made a number of changes, but I'm hearing that none of them are in effect yet.
The nuisance ordinance was enacted, so that's actually, it's hard marijuana, a number of changes. Required business licenses.
Marijuana business license, it was marijuana business license, not nuisance code.
Marijuana business license, you enacted that, and that went to effect immediately. Anyway, so if that natural-
But that didn't include any of the things that we worked on on the 9th?
No.
And?
Well, you will be, I'm not sure if it was the 9th or we were not at last.
Can somebody tell me why the Planning Commission chose to further their decision until a later date?
I can't right away.
They want more maps.
They want what?
More maps.
With more options?
Well, they didn't have any maps.
Yes, they-
They had, they had to come back and they had to ask somebody to-
No, they had two maps at their-
And they wanted some other alternatives, that's where, yeah.
You may have some other issues.
I don't recall, though, that was the big ones.
That was the big one, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
So, let's bring it to a point here. If, let's say the next meeting of the Planning Commission, they finally make a decision, we make a decision on May 9th, and it goes to the state. What kind of timeline are we looking at until we are secure?
I don't know, that's not my area of expertise. I think there's a, I believe it's something 35 days on this, Karen?
I'm sorry, I don't know that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are we talking three months?
Well, I think three months, only May 9th, I think before that. I think we're, I think at that point, we're within one to two months. I just don't know that, because I can get back to that. I'll copy it, I'll get back to the entire council.
Email us or something.
I'm just disappointed that it's been pretty clear from the council perspective that we wanted to move this on in a, in a very timely manner, and-
I don't know about that, I think you created a community engagement process that my intention was going to take some time. If the council had a clear idea of what it wanted to do from day one, I don't think you would refer to the community for that kind of commentary. Would have been easier for you to say, we want these changes in the code, please go forth and start drafting and go through the notice period, get the-
I don't think the process was as cut and dry as that. I think there were a lot of stumbling blocks we had to go over, but we are where we are now, so let's try to do this as expeditiously as we can, and I would very much, as a council person, like to know immediately if we receive requests for building permits from any other facilities.
When a building application is filed, and I'm really being completely desperate to share with you, other than that, it's proprietary, you're not, so we can't do that.
Okay.
No, but let's go forward.
Okay. Would you like to address the-
Yeah. So you also have AKS Engineering has provided you a responsive, Joey Scher, our city planner, has done what I think you were asking, after the fact, you asked for an audit, so this wasn't characterized as an audit at the outset, rather a review of the process that are taking place. So he's done a very extensive chronology, I think you may have received something extra in your email from the Planning Commission chair, they also speech matters that were outside Joe's purview. So you have a lot of chronology at this point. He has pointed, in fact, from my perspective, I'm only going to say, in case what can be due to address, one, you know, whether we want to address the issues that were raised, if there's a fundamental issue, we need to talk about it first. If that's said, then I think there are some follow-up steps that I think he has laid out to make, you know, that are sensible to that end. So, just a little history on independence, you know, approach that we've taken for quite a long time, and a post that has become problematic, it's, it would appear, is in that processing of this whole application. We have been a very development business from the community, and so we try not to hold people up unnecessarily in the review process. Some communities take quite a bit longer to process applications than we do. Part of our pride, part of the, you know, the brand and part of how we have put ourselves out in the community is, we will like to buy our reviews as comprehensive as is reasonable. I think what we find in this process is that there were concerns that we didn't anticipate for one, and two, that go flying in the face of that, you know, that philosophy. So, what this letter says is, you might want to slow it up a little bit, do a more thorough completeness review, rather than getting, rather than getting an application, accepting the application as complete, and then letting the clock start to 120 days, which became our end date on this project. Rather than that, you know, make sure that the document is thoroughly completed, and the absence of that, make sure that their team at least does one of two things, which is either hires good professional staff at the outset, so that you know this will have a good response, or two, that they will respond in writing, so you'll understand, so that we understand, you know, if they respond in writing to the criteria, then we will understand from the outset that they're getting, that, you know, we're not going to see this get dragged out through the 120-day period, create a problem for, you know, potential view of the park. Because if you get to the end of that 120 or 200, 400 days, and you still haven't, you still have not, where you need to get to to issue a complete project, then really all we have as a staff is to, is to say no, is to deny the application. So the completeness review at the front end sort of forces more consideration at the beginning, slows the process up a little bit, but probably it's a reasonable way to do the business. So that's the fundamental philosophical, philosophical approach to business that we take. We may need to slow it up a little bit, just to make sure that we're getting complete applications, so that we don't end quite ourselves in jeopardy of running the clock on review. So, I don't know if you want to give feedback to the editor, just explaining that. And then, that sort of takes in recommendations one and two from the letter, and then recommendation number three is really going, looking at the independence development code, you know, on a fairly regular basis, to see if there's any inconsistencies between that and what we are actually doing, or what is state of the art.
Which that third one is good advice, just, that's just common sense to do that.
Yeah.
The, what I had heard the council asking for was an independent audit of the process that went on. I would consider this, since he was a hired consultant, that that might not be as independent as what we were looking for, and I see a lot of things that are missing on here. If you go back to the first, for instance, the three meetings that were held with the community members, they don't show on here at all.
It would be different process.
Pardon me?
That was the land use review, this is the application.
But the point of what the council was looking for, as I understood it, was a review of the entire process. Whether it was land use or whether it was application, there was, there was a train that got moving back in August of, was it 16?
This location was 16.
And there were community meetings, there were places where the council should have been informed about things, places where the Planning Committee Commission made decisions or didn't make decisions. I'd like to see all of that calendared out.
There's a cost, does the council want me to pursue that?
I've got some of it done already, I'll give you what I've got.
You're looking for independent review?
I'd like to have a council discussion about that.
I'll throw something. First of all, I've been thinking about this process and went through it, it did seem kind of messy, didn't seem maybe smoother, and maybe there was some miscommunication and that sort of thing. Thinking about that, though, after we got through the whole process, I'm not sure it would have changed the outcome. And I'm not sure, independent review, I'm not sure that's going to really change much either. But I do have one question that is not addressed here. One of the people that I think brought, one of the, that was trying to appeal the decision, and I cannot remember the woman's name, and I think she was kind of late filing, sort of thing, but she was, she was at the, I believe it was the Planning Commission, and she was only given three minutes to speak, and I wasn't sure why that happened. That was something that really bothered me, that somebody, that I think had been part of an appeal, was not allowed to, given the proper time to speak.
I wouldn't disagree with that, I think that was, given that she wasn't, how much she should have had on the mic, so I think that was mishandled.
Yes, yeah. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I guess, I got, I want to go back farther, I want to go back to where the legislature passed this, and then this happened, and then we could have done this, but we didn't, okay? And because we didn't do this, all the rest of this stuff came out. We did, because we didn't put it to a vote, or because we didn't put it on the ballot, but we had an opportunity, I think, to do this. And that, I don't understand all that, I don't know the timing, but I would really like some independent auditor, and I don't know whether it would be some land use auditor or whatever, somebody to come in and kind of review that whole thing, because I'm not, I'm not just, I just don't understand how we get ourselves into a position like this. I hate to see it happen again on something else. And it'd be worth the money, of course, I don't know how much Joey Scher got paid, but it would be worth the money to have that kind of resolve and have it out in the open, but let some of the community have a shot at it, what do you have to say?
Let me answer the question, because I think that I found this work out, but I think he pointed in the direction that I want to go, which is how do you correct the situation so that doesn't occur again? I don't know if others disagree with that. If you think there's not enough information here or warrant, lots of changes.
I'd be interested in seeing what, as I read the recommendations, I was looking to, okay, how do we take the recommendations? That's what I, that's what I was most interested in, is, and I think, Counselor Day, you said sometimes things already happen, and, okay, that was yesterday. But I'd like to, I'd like to see how the specifics of what, working out of the recommendations, what we can do in the going forward, because I think there's very specific kinds of things that we can do, like the third one. It is time to probably take a look at the development code, because as business cycles have gone, because I'm going to tell you that I know a number of other cities, you know, they were busy in one part of the century, and then they got real slow and things, there was no real need to do much in the development code for a long time, and now it's relevant again. And I think that that would be really a specific kind of thing that we could go forward with, that would address, address the issues going forward, and I think that would be more beneficial than rehashing what was previously done, okay? We all agree that it wasn't as clean and nice as it could have been, maybe it should have been, but we can't change anything there, but we can change what the future is, and that's, I want to be futuristic. Other comments?
I don't have, well, I think in this case, I'd like to see us go back and read it and say, why did this happen? But I understand what you're saying. One of the things I think we not have an issue with is always going with, and I don't know if I'm right by the side, always states AKS Engineering and Forests, we have a hired consultant that we do things with, maybe we should have gone to somebody that is specialized in marijuana, or, you know, somebody that was more knowledgeable. I thought, just because his last name is Day, his name, I didn't do with it, but I thought that attorney ate everybody up. I thought he came up with more information that was more poignant than any of our staff came up with, and that's really, I mean, and then there's Bruce Patton, one of our citizens, an engineer, a credit license engineer, he basically came up with the thing about noise and what we ought to do, and I don't remember hearing the staff, when I say staff, I don't mean, I'm talking about a consultant, I don't remember him saying, you know, you can do it like this. It was like, oh, okay, it's agricultural, therefore, they can just do whatever they want. It was only when we got into a negotiation, more or less, with Attorney Day and then that person, that we started seeing some results, so I would have liked to see that come out of staff, rather than come out of a guy that lives across the street from him, you know what I mean?
I can't make much of a pledge of that, I know, but one thing, we don't, we aren't large enough to carry all the staff.
No, no, I understand that.
And these kinds of, that's why we, I have a consultant support.
You have to.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So I'm going to, if I-
To do what?
I just want to see if there's other, other folks. Counselor Hicks, did you want to weigh in on any of this?
I kind of second the forward-looking approach. I mean, we've expressed this desire to not have something come through again, and I think the longer we take looking back at what's happened, or even going back further, the greater the chance that we kind of miss our timeframe of getting things in place before we get another application.
Counselor Linder, did you want to add anything to this?
Not, not. But I'm learning something, it's, it was kind of embarrassing, but with these mistakes, I think that we're going to be moving forward, doing the proper steps and asking for the right person for advice and everything, so that it doesn't happen again.
Counselor, was she want to weigh in at all?
Well, only that I'm looking at, you know, paragraph one under the recommendations, and, you know- and, you know, Joey's always suggesting that we essentially front-load that process, and extend that out, and just get a really hard look at things, and make sure that fans, whatever those issues may be down the road, get addressed early on with the process, and that, that's where it wound up under the gun. I really, I don't see necessarily a point in going back on the entire history of what the council did or did not do prior to this regarding the marijuana issuing independence. We either did or we did not do it, and it's done, it's history, it's not something we can go back and change. And so I'm going to agree with Mayor Cartel that at this point, we need to take a future vision. I think we have a substance review of the process that we went through that is applicable, and let's move forward, and let's fix what is wrong, and that way we get it 100% right next time. I don't see a lot of point dwelling in the past, let's move forward, and, you know, at the speed of independence.
As promised, Councilor Lynch, again, back to you.
I have no problem with moving forward, but the way you learn from your mistakes is to understand what those mistakes are. And this report that we got did not delineate exactly what could have been done differently. It gave us a paragraph of things that we should do in general. I don't feel like we would have a good handle on how to do this going forward unless we knew what we did wrong in the past, as, from the perspective, which I can only give the council perspective, because I'm not staff, I'm not planning commission, I'm not neighbor to the bill job, but I can say that as a councilperson, I felt very under-informed sometimes, because these deadlines would pop up, and I think, where did that come from? And it was, well, the planning commission knew about this, we didn't tell the council because it wasn't germane at the time, or we didn't think about it, and yet, when something comes up in the form of a deadline, and you're pretty sure it's going to be appealed to the council, the council needs to have that information ahead, not behind. So again, I would just say, I think the way we learn from our mistakes is to review the past, to figure out what was done wrong, and to avoid doing that again. Is there a state agency we could bring in for a, not a, not a nose-to-the-paper scrutiny, but at least a 10,000-foot view to say where some steps could have been adjusted?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilor.
There's no, there's no audit process of the state offers, any?
Yeah, nothing that I'm aware of, I've not heard that from anyone.
I may do a little bit of my own looking.
Okay. If there's nothing else that we need to say, what I'm going to ask from staff then, is that in the, in the coming months, let's try to take those recommendations into operational, into specifics, and so that this is, so it's from broad spectrum to actionable kinds of things, and let's keep people informed on this one.
I will, let me just add one more little piece to that, though. We are going through a transition, so your full name, our community development director has been here for 27 years, is retiring along with all his knowledge, and so specifically when it comes to the development code, you know, I've asked him to, you know, to detail what he can detail before he leaves, but frankly, he's not, he's not going to be any less busy these last two months than he has been going up to these last two months, so I think work to his workload may not be terribly fruitful, and I'm sure it'll be once he retires, and so we'll do our best to pick his, right, I think we've been collecting information, our parent collects information, you know, on code, as we go through it, we, you know, and we've planned on a review of the code, review of anything going forward, but just to understand that there will be a transition, that we'll be doing business a little bit differently, we'll be bringing in a public work director, instead of community development director, we'll expand, sorry, Council, we'll be expanding our consultant presence in terms of our planning, trying to create some office hours, who can, daytime office hours, planning, so as to assist people and assist us. So that'll be a little different way to do a business, I think it's a better way to do a business, but there is a transition. So all that said, is to say, I hear you, I declare, just understand that the next few months are going to be jumping on with a new hire, and people getting grounded in the work, and what people like.
So you'll keep us informed as we move forward.
Does Cobb or Lake of Oregon Cities have any, anybody on staff that works on things like development code?
They do.
And can we avail ourselves of that as well?
We can, yeah, yeah, I think we started internally, we have our most experienced attorney, who is a land use expert, and on, maybe very homie, we have a resource to assist us in that project.
Okay, I'm going to keep this moving here, we have a public hearing on, on the independent cinema liquor license application, and I think Chief Mason, are you making the...
Hang on, could you be helpful, Mr. Mayor? Sergeant Dunland has a Z for priority traffic, I handed you this on his way out, but I believe we're equally familiar with it as a group, the Independence Cinema LLC.
Hold on, man, excuse me, hold on, I know you wanted to make an announcement about your thing, so if you could hold for just a moment, please? Or, would it, could I, could I impose, and I know you're trying to reach something, and before we get into this, did you want to make your announcement about the speaking thing coming up?
I just didn't want to interrupt.
No, no, this, I had said that you would get an opportunity to make that announcement, that was my error for not putting you up right front, and I apologize to everybody.
No, okay, I was late, we're one car family most of the time. I just wanted to invite all of you, and anyone else who would like to come, to a nonpartisan luncheon, they say there's no such thing as a free lunch, but we're having one, at Gentle House this Saturday, when the excellent speaker, and I know this because I've been to his, his presentations before, Ed Dover, will talk about Donald Trump and the usual first hundred days, and for those of you who've never heard Ed speak before, he's a presidential scholar, and he's written six books on elections, and he'll be a wonderful, wonderful presenter, but what he's equally skilled at is taking questions, and so he's told me he's going to speak for 20 or 30 minutes and then take questions, and so I hope to see some of you there, and I'll leave these flyers on the desk as I...
What's his name again?
Ed Dover.
D O V E R?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I can vouch that Professor Dover is, as she presented, he's an expert, he's good, he presents even handily, and I think, I think it'd be worthwhile, and I apologize to everybody for, oops, I'm sorry, I didn't put you on earlier, but I...
That's okay, and, and it's at noon, and like I said, I'd love to see all of you there.
Thank you for taking that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Chief.
Chief Mason, again, I apologize for stepping, but I...
We're history and flexible, Mayor.
Thank you.
As I was saying, the Independence Cinema, which is located across the street at 450 South Second Street, has made application for alcohol sales up from us. The police department has done a background check, and I'm here to report on that today. I'm just going to get a few of the highlights, because you have the memo in your packet. Eli Kassab is the owner of Prestige Development, currently has three movie theaters, one of which is here in Independence. That theater is currently managed by Jose Orozco, who has completed his required training for his OLCC service permit, and he is also here today if you have specific questions. Council previously got a copy of their plan that they were going to use for control measures with the alcohol sales, and they were asked to let us know if you had any questions, and we didn't receive any, so if you have any now, Mr. Orozco is actually here, or if you have any of me, I'd be happy to answer them. We did do our required backgrounds and found about all related issues on either Mr. Orozco or the owner, Mr. Kassab.
Does staff have any questions for the chief at this point, or any other police folks? Okay, this is a public hearing, thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing, does anybody have anything they'd like to say related to this sitting in the audience? I do not see a rush to the microphone, so without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, what is your, what is your desire? Does this look okay to you, folks?
It does, this is, this is the way that the future is moving in the movie industry, and I have seen this happen in several other communities, and I actually read about this in the paper before we heard about it through council. So I am happy to move to recommend approval of the liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
I have a motion in a second. I echo the quality comments, they've done a great job here in town, and for a number of years, I know that they're going to do a good job, they have done the first cabin, and everything that they've done here in Independence, I have no concerns. Are there additional comments? Hearing no additional comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried, thank you very much. What we're going to do now is we're going to reset, we're going to adjourn the council meeting, and am I adjourning or recessing, or...
Adjourning.
I'll adjourn the council.
Before we adjourn, I have one other question that came from the management notes, the team notes.
Okay.
And this probably is going to be to Mr. Klein. In the notes, it said, "From Mike, Main Street production facility may have retail sales." Is that referring to another processing plant? Do you want to look at this to see where it came from?
Okay, cool, there's...
Come again?
You read one of Mike's reports, he was in here, and you were just reading his notes.
Hey, but it is now, it's a X, 509...
Oh, 905?
905, Highway 51. 905, Highway 51, the facility has been under construction.
North Main.
North Main, I'm sorry, for some time, yeah, they are considering it retail. They can do that, my right, they have no obligation to...
Are they processing or grow, or...
It's a grow up, I believe.
Okay, because a processing couldn't do a retail, could they?
Well, if it's industrial, you're allowed to have accessories, so they'll go retail for any industrial use.
So, um, okay, 905 North Main, that's...
Still have to pull a license from the state, and they still have to pull a license from us, but there's no, there's no other land use review requirement.
Okay, so are they, are they going to be the same type of operation that will be on Stryker?
Yeah, they do.
But is it, was the permit for processing...
Well, they pulled, they'll implement, they never had to go through a cycle sign review, or, so there was no, there were no changes to the property that they require.
And is that where Franklin Suite used to be?
No, it's a...
Across the street.
Trailer park?
Yeah, trailer park, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor.
So there's going to be another site, this site on that building?
I'm sorry, Councilor.
Is that another marijuana site this night?
That is another site that has been under construction for some time, they've been approved on, it was just a building permit, they pulled a license from the state, so we really had no control over the building permit.
Since we're doing a couple, one other thing, would you like to speak about our favorite building?
Sure.
Because that, since that is now...
Yeah, you know, again, as I told reporter earlier today, you know, they only want to share so much information, so keep it a little limited, there's not a lot to share, so it sort of coincides, but at this point, the, the folks that financed the payoff to the city of its leanback, so...
This is a state station.
State station, probably, so they have reacquired the building, we don't, I don't know exactly, I don't know what terms, but we assume that no, it wasn't paid off, so they've reacquired the building, and they are now in the process of trying to do one of several things, either first and foremost, they like to sub building, they're really not the founders, they're, they're financial investors, so they have some, they have some shorter money in the mix. Two, they asked to do that, and they were led to perhaps partner up with, with the developer, again, as a financial partner to that effort, so they're testing the market now, looking to do market analysis, to see what would work better in that location, or three, they may end up developing it themselves, if they can't find a good partner. So those are sort of choices infallible, they're, again, they're not necessarily developers, so that's really not what they do, they're financial, they're financial partners, they're, you know, they're, you know, that's what, they're the money people, they don't work concrete. So they don't want to be equity partners, and so they don't have to, because the point of all, they're looking to be a lender, a lender, and actually, they're looking, their preference is just to get out of the deal, they're long enough, and they, they're based in Seattle, this is not, they're based in operations, so this is not where they'd like to do business.
Person that's, that was the original developer owner, what do we call it, I can't remember his name.
Steve Barrow.
Yeah, is he involved in it still?
I understand he is, he's been out, I think he asked that question. It's been a while, but I think he's, I think they acquired two other buildings, I think the church that she was occupied with, the store, and one of the building sites, and there's three properties they acquired.
And is all of that in the, in, under the new ownership now?
Yes.
The extra buildings, too?
That's not mistaken, I haven't seen the title work for it.
Well, as of today, it hadn't, nothing had been recorded with the county yet.
Okay, I didn't know that, I, we were told it had been recorded, it was a while back, so it may not have been completely, completely processed.
Well, it wasn't recorded in 2017, because I looked.
I, I looked Thursday night, or Friday, I didn't see it recorded.
No reason much later.
To just remind everybody, contrary to what some people might say in the paper, it's not a city project, we don't have control over it, I don't have any control over it, and it is a private project, and we're hopeful that they move forward. Thank you very much for updating us on this.
So all the, so all the little statutes and stuff that we sent to them about, you need to do this, you need to do this, that's all gone?
No, they, they went on site, actually, with our code enforcement folks, and Chief was there, I believe, or at least he set your folks on the way, and so my, my understanding is they were, they had very good intent to comply with the current issues that we inspired from.
I'd also know that Mike Danko has been in contact with these folks over time, the money folks, to keeping them appraised, and just, there's a lot of good staff working in the community, it's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Klein, so here's what we're going to do, we're going to adjourn this meeting, we're going to go downstairs, we'll have, let's take about 10 or 12 minutes, I know some people haven't had dinner, and I know that there's some pizza down there that you can grab a slice or two, we're going to sit around, and then we'll start working. We're going to try to be done by nine o'clock, if we can, tonight, because I know some people have to get up very, very early in the morning, and so, without objection, I'm adjourning this meeting, and we'll start out in about 10, 12 minutes, okay?